Now we're going to open up the meeting at 6:33. I'll call the meeting to order. As we get started, and certainly welcome everybody, we're on a Zoom meeting as per the governor's, governor's executive orders. Our remote meetings. What I'd like to do before we get started is ask you guys if we can add, I emailed you the resolution for the STEEP grant.
Yep.
That needs to go in on Friday, so if we can, if we can get a motion to add that item to the agenda, we can take care of that later on.
I'd like to make a motion to add the, and authorize in First Selectman Angus McDonald to apply and manage $125,000 STEEP grant that we're applying for.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. It's gonna be one second. Oh, okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is to approve minutes from the regular meeting held on August 11th, 2020.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular meeting on August 11th, 2020.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm just adding another, another participant. Okay, let's see, the next item on the agenda is COVID update from our health district, Scott Martinson and Sherry Carlson. I wonder, guys, thank you very much again for coming out. Certainly appreciate all you guys are doing right now, and especially with the schools going, I really appreciate your taking the time to come talk this night.
Yep.
So.
Sure, not a problem, yeah. I mean, it's been pretty much the same since we've talked last, sprinkling of cases here and there. You know, Deep River had a couple here and there, we've had two in Chester, we haven't seen any in probably about three months in Chester. So, and these are community transmissions, but the important thing to remember is they're not outbreaks. And what you're seeing in Connecticut, a lot of times, specifically in Danbury, they're getting 19 to 20 to 30 a day. And most of that's a result, they're saying, of travel, parties, different things like that. So, you know, the state stepped in, kind of took over, the commissioner of health is kind of running that town now. They were operating with a interim health director, I'm sure that did not help, although they've been warned for months that they need to hire someone. But you can see the spread gets a little bit to the neighboring towns when those things happen as well. And obviously that affected places like Western Connecticut, that's going to have to completely pull back now. You know, kids just get there and now they gotta leave, you know, three days later, and it's kind of a tough situation. But you do see them up in Southfield, you see a couple outbreaks in the Wyndham area, and it's just usually a result of people just not doing the right thing. There's a lot of house parties going on. An interesting one, just to share quickly, it was a private party geared towards New York residents. It was $50 a ticket, and the location in Connecticut was disclosed after the fee was paid. Well, it ended up, this happened in a small little town in Connecticut, and it was comprised of 100% New Yorkers that paid $50 to travel to a town in Connecticut as a resident for a giant pool party. So these things are kind of happening, and that's gone to the governor, he might mention that on tomorrow night's call. But it's these weird little things that have been going on that are starting to trigger these outbreaks as well, so. Very strange stuff, you know, people get a little bit weirder every day with this virus sometimes, and it's just, and it shows. But, good news, Middlesex County is still one of the best counties in the country. You know, Deep River, 21 cases, that's, that's not bad at all, considering, I mean, you know, really, you'd like to see none, but when you look at the metrics in the rest of the state, we're right where we should be. It means we're doing our jobs, we're not seeing outbreaks because of people letting up off the pedal and things like that, we're still diligent. That said, you do start to see a little bit more of a change with people's behavior. I'm starting to get a lot more complaints, starting to see a little bit less compliance with masks and such, which in turn, going into a fall/winter, can have, you know, some serious consequences. So we're kind of like in this weird little holding pattern with sprinkling of cases, which can really go one of two ways. Kind of stay the same-ish or get really bad when we coincide with the fall and the flu and such. Sabre's had a few more cases, they're up to 49, Clinton's had a few more, 77. As I said, Chester's at nine, had them 46, had a little too many that I cared for, but it does happen, and 21 Deep Rivers, so that's 20 in two cases, residential.
Is that the total, is that the total number for Deep Rivers that we've had, or is that presently active? What is?
No, that's what we've had since the inception of COVID.
Is there any active numbers as to, you know, anything recent?
Well, yes, we had, what would we have, Angus? I think we had a couple recent last week.
We had two in the last three weeks.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's a sprinkling, you know, Sherry can touch on a little bit, a lot's still kind of related to, we could figure it out now, and the reason they're not spreading is, is a lot to do with what Sherry's doing, is this contact tracing, and she can talk about that a little bit, but it really is an important tool, especially when you have a manageable amount of cases to prevent outbreaks. Without it, you're, you're kind of flying in the, in the dark. The only flip side to that is the testing in the state is still in a weird position where most testing's coming back quicker, sometimes Sherry's, you know, minute, 20 minutes, hours, some still taking five, six days, so it's kind of weird. So if we don't get a person in our contact tracing system five days after they were infected, of course you're not going to get the same results, so nationwide Connecticut issues, so. Other than that, you know, we're gearing up for the flu vaccine clinics, we've had about 400 people register, which is absolutely fantastic, so we're going to be starting dates in mid-September for that. Sherry plans on going to individual police fire EMS, we'll coordinate with you guys on that. Using to make it easy, Sabre said they would like one on their members' night, you know, maybe that's a good time to open up the bays and we can come down and stuff, so we'll let you know. We gotta get the vaccine first, we know it's coming, it's not in our hands, so you hate to schedule too much until you have a little bit of product to surety, but.
Right, right. We're gonna start, we're gonna start pushing that, get that out on the websites and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
That's for everybody, any citizen can sign up for that, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've gotten a lot from Lyme, old Lyme Westbrook, you know, some people are gonna want to go to CVS, and that's fine.
Yep.
You can go to your doctor and get it, that's fine, this is just another avenue for people to get it, and it's gonna help out the elderly that may not have yet gone indoors, you know, because people still forget that the governor's never said 65 and over should really be going out that much, you know, that, that really has never changed, although you see it change, of course people do get out, but it's not really changed officially, so. But that's what we got going on, as you mentioned Angus, the schools are just absolute insanity. It's gonna be very interesting to watch. We've done a lot with each region, you know, we got about 12 schools. I guess you can say we're as ready as we get, but I think public perception is gonna probably drive a lot of decision-making, what happens with schools. So it's where these first cases come. You know, I'll tell you, we've already had a school where the teachers reported to school without the kids, obviously, and a teacher went home with a high fever already, and we already had to think, all right, what does this mean, you know, so.
Right.
All these scenarios, and there's gonna be a zillion of them, it could be on the bus, it could be before they go to school, it could be when they're in school, you know, are gonna really create a lot of issues, so praying that we're not the first area in town, because it's gonna happen fast and furious once schools open, there's just inevitably, it's just gonna happen. That doesn't mean people are gonna get sick, doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna see a higher death rate, doesn't mean you can't control it, but it's gonna be very, very interesting because it's brand new. And the thing with schools, people don't, they like to forget, is they're really not designed for social distancing, and this is really what this is about. You know, you go through halls in elementary schools, they're just so tiny, I mean, they're so cute, and, you know, they got little lines up and stuff, but these are three, four, five, six-year-old kids, it's gonna be a challenge, and I think teachers are gonna be in the role of mask believes more than they are teaching, but we've made it happen, I think it's a good call to try, I think you almost have to try, and kind of see what happens. They're even stuck to their guns, they're the only city or town I know of in the state that bucked the governor's advice, recommendations, to at least offer hybrid, and they're 100% going to be going just virtual, I believe, for the first six to eight weeks, so they all have a little time to kind of assess and happen, so, very interesting, but that's what I got. Sherry, you want to talk about, a little bit about contact tracing?
Sure, um, contact tracing continues, with the sprinkling, I'm able to reach people and reach their contacts, and actually, there are places of business to giving them the guidance, so that businesses, businesses that can stay open and do the right things, so they can stay open, has been happening, um, you know, again, some of them are happening because of social, not social distancing, but we're able to provide thermometers and masks to people who don't have them, been able to support them through some medical decisions where, you know, they're hanging out at home and, but really getting worse, and so encouraging them to utilize the medical system as they need to, and not be afraid to do so. With the schools, you know, we have a great relationship with the supervisors of the school nurses, you know, we've set up templates for them to be able to gather the right information, so together we can look at, you know, what symptoms we're seeing and what mitigations have been kept, so that we know what the risk is and make those decisions on a individual, one-on, you know, each, each case will be, had to be decided individually. And with the flu vaccine, you know, we're gonna do drive-throughs, but we'll also be doing some of the firehouses, if they open up their bays, we'll pick out a couple trucks, it'll be just as good as doing it outside, but with a little bit more protection and getting those first responders together as it's convenient for them. And, and then we'll also be doing individual assistance on a walk-in, but it'll be, we've got permission to do a pop-up tent there for, as needed, those who can't make the, the other clinics that we have. I've called all of our vendors, and we, you know, we're looking that we'll be getting it by the second week of September, so we want to make sure we have it in hand, as Scott said, setting those dates, but the communication will go back out from the registrations to let everybody know as well as you people when those dates are set.
Wow, well, as usual, you guys are working like crazy.
Yeah, it's a challenge, but we're up for it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yep, no, you can't give up five months into this, we're, we're gonna maintain posture, so.
For sure.
Does anyone have any questions? Because then I'm gonna have to hop off and share, but if anyone has a question, we'd be certainly happy to answer it.
I'm all set, the only thing I wanted to just mention is appreciation to the crowd for the mosquito larvicide as well, we're, I know that's going out again tomorrow and Thursday, they'll be spreading it around the catch bases around town, so.
Yep, absolutely, and as you probably knew.
Hopefully that goes the long ways.
Yep, they did have a few cases, I believe, in Connecticut from mosquitoes, but no human transmission yet, so keep an eye on it, I'm just hoping we're spared of that, you know, this fall, give us a little break, right?
Not really.
But the larvicide is not gonna hurt, you know, it's one of those things, you may even notice over time, you know, like, wow, the mosquitoes, certainly in the populous areas and the main street and such with a lot of storm drains, it can make a big difference on the adult population, so whether or not they carry triple E West Nile, you don't want any of it, so.
Don't want any of it.
It's all good, it's all good, so.
All right. Great, thank you.
Anytime, talk to you guys.
Thanks.
Just had somebody else show up, so I'll let that down, and, and we'll move on to the next one, it comes to appointments, we've got Deep River. The first one on, on the list is the Deep River Elementary School Board of Education, that was a seat that was left empty, neither the Democratic Party or the Republican Party put someone on the ballot, so that, that has sat empty, the Board of Education themselves had a certain amount of time to make an appointment, they did not do that, and we have Pat Makowski, who was the former secretary from the, from the elementary school, who volunteered to fill that position. Just coincidentally, we had a recommendation of Kate Bergeron from the Republican Town Committee came to me this morning, middle of the day, so, you know, it's a bit too late, we'd already said this, unless, unless something happens with this, we're a disappointment, we'll just move forward with Pat Makowski, and if another, another vacancy comes up, we'll get Kate in the wings.
Thank you for looking into that information, I had asked you Angus.
Yep.
If, if Pat, if Pat could serve as being a past employer, so thank you for the getting back to me with that response.
Problem. So if, if we're all okay with that, I'd like to take a motion to appoint Pat Makowski to the Deep River Elementary School Board of Education with a term to expire of 11/21/2023.
Hey, I make a motion that we appoint Pat Makowski to the Deep River Elementary Board of Education term to expire 11/21/2023.
I'll second it for Miss Pat.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
You bet, thank you, Pat, for.
My pleasure, believe me.
Volunteering to do that.
There she is.
A lot of work.
Yes.
A lot of work, and we appreciate it.
I can't figure out how to put my picture up, so forget it. Good night, guys, thank you.
Good night, Pat, thanks. Okay, next, next up is Planning and Zoning, we have Daphne Stroud, also known as Christie Stroud, is an alternate member, we just had a resignation on Planning and Zoning, regular member, so we are, we have Daphne, or Christie is next in line to go to move up, so we need to appoint her as a, moving from an alternate member to a regular member.
If you keep smoking, your freedom may only go as far as your oxygen tube.
Whoa, what was that?
No, we just had somebody else join us.
Yeah.
Wasn't muted. So, okay, so these, both of these, this is an interesting spot we're in, we have a couple of nominations or appointments to make, both of those, as everyone's aware, we need to go to a town meeting for those appointments to be confirmed.
Okay.
What, what we're hoping to do, we're working with the health district to, while we still have the good weather, to schedule a town meeting for as soon as we can, I think sometime in the next couple of weeks, to be held either at Plattwood Park or over at Debit Field, where we can be outside, we'll set up a microphone, set up a stand, and we can bring seats, a few seats for folks, and, and spread them out, so people can distance themselves as per all the guidelines. We're gonna try, I'm working with the town attorney right now to make sure when we schedule that, maybe we can schedule a rain date, so if the weather is in climate, we don't have to go through the process of advertising again for a second for another meeting.
The only question I would have with that Angus is, still you're, you're subject to a certain amount of people, correct?
Yes.
Outside venues, only 100?
I believe that it's 100 right now, yeah. It's not, it's not a venue, so it's not, but it is outside, it is outside.
It's an outside.
We've got to limit it to 100.
To 100, so what happens if?
Go ahead.
What happens if 130 people show up?
I don't know, those are the things we have to explore.
Okay.
You know, we have, it's, it's time for us to, you know, working towards, and I, I hope you guys are in favor, we're gonna, we're going to have to have Zoom available anyway, if people don't want to come.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I just want to be protected, so if 130 people show up and we say, okay, you can't, you can't attend it, we still have to give our citizens an opportunity.
If that happens, then we have, then I would suggest we have the discussion as much as we can, and then we move it to, to another opportunity to vote, maybe we do a walkthrough vote or something like that.
Okay.
But then we just, just adjourn the meeting to a, to a virtual meeting, we have the same conversation that we're going to have virtually, but I think it's, I think it's appropriate to try to start having these, some of these meetings in purpose, in person. It's, it's very clear to me that, that this virtual, Zoom or whatever other technology has, has really encouraged participation, and we want to continue to encourage that, we'll talk about that when it comes to the STEEP grant. But it's also, I think it's very important for us to, to start having meetings in person if we can, and town meetings in particular, where we need to take a vote, I think, need to, need to start happening.
Yep.
Oh, there's also, shoot, another person, we need to get on that too, so, but she's already been appointed, so she didn't need to be here, not on Planning and Zoning, that's the community health, sorry, I got distracted when I looked down at the agenda for a minute. So that's the thought, I just assume, take these, we can appoint both of these folks now, and then open up the conversation if anybody wants to, I'm just seeing a lot of folks here that is probably why they're here, so we can either have an appointment individually, Christie Stroud moving from alternate member to regular member, and then Marion Stay, I can, she's applied, she was, she was a Deep River resident for many, many years, that was the zoning enforcement officer in Essex for, I want to say 15 years or so, she retired a few years ago and has volunteered to step up and serve on our, on our commission as an alternate member. I'll leave it up to you guys if you want to appoint them individually or together, but.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to move Daphne Stroud from an alternate to a, a permanent position.
Okay, her term expired, will expire on 12/1/2022.
12/1/2022.
Yep.
I second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, how about Marion?
Well, the other one I would like to, to wait, and, and give some more people an opportunity if they're interested in applying for it, it is an alternate spot, so we don't have to fill it today, or, or a week, I just want to give people, if there's any more applicants that want to be part of it, I'd like to try to give them an opportunity, I know we've, we've gone over this, there's been, there's been some vacant spots for six, eight months, but I would just like to give someone else, if there's anyone else there that wants to, I mean, I know she's very qualified as being the zoning enforcement officer for years in Essex, but there could be some other people out there that we don't know of, that, you know, give it a time limit, give it a two weeks or a three week period at the end of that, or by our next selectmen's meeting, then we'll make a decision, that's just my.
That's, that's fine, Duane, I, I want to, just want to point out that there, even after appointing Marion, there still will be two other vacancies, and we do have another application that came in this morning from, I'm trying to remember his name, fellow from the farm up in.
Stan Reinheimer, possibly?
Yeah, there you go, Stan, yep, there you go, great, yep, so Stan has applied, and we're gonna meet him, and talk with him and all that kind of stuff, so, but we do have two other vacancies will be, will be open.
What happened to my letter?
Your letter is in everyone's mailbox, and I think you emailed it to us all as well, and we have Jane as well, who has applied to be seated again on the commission. So if you want to hold off on Marion, that's fine, what that's going to do though, I'm gonna, I'm gonna think I'm going to, to delay the public meeting or the town meeting to vote for Daphne until after, we're not having, trying to schedule a town meeting every two weeks while we try to fill these seats.
My, my only, my only concern there Angus is if, if we schedule a town meeting now for Daphne and Marion.
Yep.
And then we fill the other spot or two at the next month's meeting, our next, you know, two weeks from now.
We'll have to do another one.
We'll have to do another one.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's what I just said, I'm not gonna, if you want to delay that, that's fine.
Okay, can we just?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna make that, I'm not gonna schedule a meeting for two weeks from now, and then another one, although, we'll talk about that, because we might be able to, to schedule the meeting to, well, it's not as, not as convenient as it used to be when we were meeting here, we could just schedule a town meeting immediately following the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Right.
But we, you know, we'll, we'll try to figure that out, but if you don't want to do that now, it's fine.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I agree, that's all right for me.
All right.
Can, can I make a suggestion Angus?
Sure.
There are probably a number of people like me that are older, that are very dubious about a large meeting, although I would like to vote, is there some way that we could do paper ballots that we could pick up and, and drop off maybe at that table in front of town hall?
I will look into that, Jane, I don't know of that, I think that, as far as I know right now, you have to, you have to be in attendance at the town meeting to vote at the town meeting, but that's, I don't know everything, that's for sure.
Yeah, check into the legalese, yep.
The, you know, I'm, that's, that's the opportunity that we're trying to do, is to, we don't, I, I don't, I think that there probably is room in the, in the executive orders for us to, to not even have a town meeting, but I don't think that's appropriate either, so, you know, we're trying to, trying to work this out, so we can allow as much participation as we can, and, and do this as close to normal as we can.
If.
Where we are, we don't need, Pat doesn't need, so Pat's on Board of Education, that's fine.
If you ran a town meeting Angus outside, can, can you still vote via Zoom or no?
No, no, town meetings cannot allow remote voting, you have to be in attendance, as far as I know, that's, that's my readings of the executive orders, and certainly, certainly not perfect, so maybe not.
But that limits the number of people that could vote.
It does Jane, and that's what Duane is talking about just a couple of minutes ago, that's why we're trying to figure out how we can do that, we can only get 100 people in the, at the, at the park as far as I know, and if, if more folks come, come out than that, then we'll have to make, make some adjustments to it, I'm not certain, we'll just continue to research it, but we want, we want to encourage as much participation as we can, that means a drive-through vote, then maybe we do a drive-through vote, I don't know, I don't know how that works, we'll look into it, and we'll continue to try to, try to move this along.
I, I don't want to interrupt you Angus, excuse me, I put an application in over a year ago, spoke to the, spoke to the three of you, and now we're accepting more applications, is mine null and void, or do I have to reapply?
No, well, you certainly, you certainly are, are welcome to reapply, if you want to, we have your name, we, we had, we all, we, you don't have to, you are welcome to, we know that you're, that you're, that you want to sit on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've got three members here, and no one has put your name forward for an appointment, after we all three spoke with you.
Hey, but, but I'm just asking, so I'd have to reapply?
No, I just, I just told you, no, you don't have to reapply, we have your name, you're welcome to if you want to refresh that application.
So, so you're saying I'm, I'm welcome to re, to reapply, but do I have to to be considered is all I'm asking?
No.
No.
All right, well, nobody's told me that, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
I thought I had answered you a couple times, sorry about that.
No, you really didn't, you just told me that I'm, I'm welcome to reapply.
Yep.
Yep, as far, as far as I'm concerned, if something's changed and, and whatnot, that, that, you know, if you feel there's something that we as selectmen need to know Gary, then as, as far as something has changed with you, or, you know, whatever, then, then reapply, I, I know, and I, and I can't speak for the other two, but we've, all three of us spoke with you a year ago, or whenever it was, and, and, and we know, we know that you're interested, and, and I think that's part of the reason that Duane's saying, let's wait a little bit, we'll get some people, you and Jane, and some other people that want to do it, and then we'll go through and reevaluate who's the appropriate people or whatever to be, be, you know, recommended, I should say, to go to town vote, so, you know, if something's changed with you, reapply, but as far as I'm concerned, I know that you want it, we had a long discussion, and, and, and I'm good with the way that it stands right now with you Gary.
The, the person at the horse barn must be either Stan Reinheimer or Jack Baldwin?
Stan Reinheimer, that's Scott, Scott, you know.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Kicked my recollection there, I couldn't, I couldn't remember his name, I'm just. All right, so if that's where we are, we have Daphne, we have a motion, and we have an elect, a vote to appoint Daphne as an alt, as a regular member, we're going to table Marion Stay's appointment.
Yep.
And that's, that's all we have under Planning and Zoning appointments, so no other, nothing else there, I'd like to go to the item. And, um, that's, that's all we have under planning and zoning appointments, so, no other, nothing else there, I'd like to go to the item number five, which is the steep grant.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to, uh, try and share the screen, if somebody's chatting. Okay, there you go, okay, um, try and share the screen with, so we can all take a look at the resolution. How's that working?
There it is.
Okay, great, um, as we spoke about two weeks ago, uh, the steep grant has been awarded, or not awarded, but offered to communities throughout the state. Um, they're encouraging these to be something of, that, that might be COVID related. Um, we've, um, put in, we're putting together an application right now that would, that actually, uh, is gonna try to, try to, um, to fund an e-government project is what I'm calling it.
Yeah, yep.
Uh, A, A V cameras in broadcast capacity for the auditorium, so that even once this, um, once this COVID is done, we'll have that auditorium set up so we can continue to offer professional remote, um, more professional remote, uh, broadcast capacity in the auditorium. A GIS system, um, goes hand in hand with an online land use permitting system, both of those incur, allow for people to, to do more of their work outside of the town hall, if that's the way they want to do that. Um, GIS system also works very well with our assessor and tax collector office. So I think that will be, that'll be very useful and we've been trying to do that. And new computers will be necessary for at least the, uh, the auditorium, the A V broadcast equipment, um, the GIS system will, will require new computers up in the, uh, in the zoning office and the, uh, and I think, I, at least also in the, uh, in the assessors and town clerk's office. So those are, that's the first portion of this pro, this grant. The second is installation of a permanent restroom at the town landing. That's, um, you know, when, when the sewer was planned down there, there was, there is a conduit that runs underneath the tracks already that we.
Oh, okay, alright, I didn't know that.
Do that if we had, it was, years ago, there was a, um, uh, an enclosure that sat around the port-alet. That stood for a long time, I don't, I don't remember exactly when that came down, but it was probably five, six years ago at this point. And now just the, the, uh, the port-alet that's down there, it's just, it's not really that, that attractive, it's such a beautiful place.
Yeah.
And I think we can, I know this, this, this amount of money, we're, uh, we're still scrambling to put together the cost on this, um, but it will fall, I'm certain, well below the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant, so. The idea is to, to make that application for both of those and hopefully be awarded that. I'm hopeful that almost every grant is going to be, um, rewarded as the state did something different this year with the steep grants. And divided all of the amount of money, the total amount of money that was available and divided that by one hundred and sixty-nine, came up with a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And, uh, and I, it seems to me to be an effort to just allow for, um, for every town.
Everybody to get some.
To be awarded some money, so, um, you know, these are the thoughts that we have, we, you know, we have some sidewalks we'd like to install and things like that, that's what we used to steep money for in the past.
Correct.
Uh, but this, this was pretty quickly thrown out for us, um, and we're working pretty hard to get this done, so.
Angus, you had talked.
This will continue.
You, you had talked in the past about, uh, the restrooms at Plattwood Park. If there's enough money, would you consider doing something up there and cleaning them up?
Replacing those, yes, that's, that's a good idea, um, and we were trying to work with Carol on the, uh, the, um, what was that, sustainability grants, uh, to use for that, but, um, that's a good idea, we can install that down here too. I'm not sure that they're, I'm not sure they would use them for, that this is something would be, uh, used for an upgrade, but.
Okay.
There is, there certainly is money in there for that, so I will, um, I'll see if we can add that.
I just know that you, I just know in the past you had talked about it, so.
Oh yeah, no, but it's time for those to get, to get redone, so that's a good idea.
Well, any, any of those, including the two, two items on this resolution, you know, if, if for some reason we don't get the steep grant, then, you know, I think we should, you know, when the time comes, we should look into other grants or finding places at the budgets that come up, because these are both, these are both needed things and, uh,
Oh yeah.
You know, you need a steep grant requirement, but, and they'd be great if we got the money, but if we don't, we need to, I think we should keep pursuing.
Broadcast capacity, uh, capabilities, I think that's, I think that's really something that, that's, um, that we're just, it's good, it, it encourages participation and that's about as good as you can get.
Yep.
Um, I do miss, I do miss seeing everybody.
Yeah.
Um, but the.
The firm that's helping us do the, uh, planning and zoning enforcement, are they helping us write these grants Angus?
Yes, yep.
Good.
Yeah. So let's see. Yeah, so that's, that's good, both of the, both of the restrooms in both of the parks are something that I, I, I had hoped that the, um, the sustainability grants could come, could, could, uh, help us fund those. Um, I think either one of those is probably a forty thousand dollar project each one, um, so, we can try, try and work that. But, uh, in order to make this application, which this has to go in on Friday, um, we need to have a resolution from the Board of Selectmen. So, um, the town attorney has prepared this for us, uh, to, um,
To meet that requirement, yep.
To meet that requirement, so if, if, uh, if we want to have a little more conversation, we certainly can, but the, uh, the resolution, everybody can't read it, I'm happy to read it out, is pursuant to Governor's Executive Orders seven S and seven C C. The members of the town of the Deep River Board of Selectmen do hereby adopt the following resolutions at a regular meeting of the board at which a quorum is present and acting throughout. Resolve for First Selectman Angus McDonald, McDonald P. And hereby is authorized, um, sorry, I'm sending someone, authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Deep River a twenty-twenty Connecticut steep grant in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for one e-government project, A V cameras and broadcast capacity for the auditorium, GIS system, online land use permitting system and new computers. And two, installation of the permanent restroom at the town landing. Further resolve that, uh, First Selectman Angus McDonald is hereby authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts and documents necessary to obtain said twenty-twenty steep grant with the state of Connecticut, and that will be signed by the three of us.
When it, when it says one e, e-government project, is that one total price, one project for a hundred and twenty-five thousand Angus, or is that, we'll be okay having all these different projects tied into this one grant?
Well, that's what we're, you know, I've got to call into O P M, uh, it hasn't been returned yet, that we can do more than one project at one time.
Okay.
The one is the, uh, the e-government project and the second is the restroom. If we are not able to move forward with, uh, with both on the one grant, then, uh, well, the, the permanent restroom would be more money. I think that the e-government project is more appropriate given the circumstances that we're in next spring, so.
Okay.
No, um, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the resolution as read, um, the, um, steep grant twenty-twenty.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, um, let's see, audience and citizens, let me see if I'll unshare this screen.
There we go.
I'd like to make a, a comment, um, it, it sounds like you have a number of people interested in being part of planning and zoning, um, and personally, I would like to see all of those names go to a town meeting and vote on them and the ones with the most votes get position one, two or three, it's not necessary to push on this actually, because with Christie, you're gonna have a full board.
Correct.
And, uh, you don't even need a full board to, to have a quorum. So planning and zoning can go merrily on their way with what they have, so there's no reason to, you know, push on this because they're not crippled.
Okay, thank you.
Angus?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if I could be heard, cause I can't see anybody, um, this is Christine Nucci and I sit on the Economic Development Commission and last night we ha, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Everyone, um, good. Okay, sorry, sorry, yes, so, um, last night we had a meeting and one of the things that came up in the meeting, um, that we talked about was our sidewalks in the presence of Deep River, and I know we're still coming out of like recovering from the storm, um, but one of the things that was mentioned were the sidewalks and the amount of grass that's growing and the, the cracks and, and the damage, it's starting to damage some of the, uh, nice beautiful brick sidewalks that we have, and so, um, and we also, you know, talked a little bit about some storefronts and then maintaining and meeting the, uh, zoning and zoning, I guess, will handle that part of it, but I didn't know, is there anything that we can do, um, Nick, uh, mentioned developing a, uh, committee, like a building and grounds committee, um, somebody who could kind of oversee that type of, that type of work?
Well, we're trying to maintain, you know, when, we don't drive all of the thirty-five miles of road every day or every week even. But we, as we see things come up, then we try to repair them. The sidewalk project, I'm not sure that I, that I'm familiar with, with where any, we're having any problem except for a section down by the, the keyboard pond. And that's a, that's an interesting repair and we haven't quite figured out yet how we're going to do that. Um, another committee is certainly, certainly something that's appropriate, I guess, if, if, if everyone thinks it is. We, you know, we, we struggle to get volunteers for, for most everything except for planning and zoning right now.
I know, I think that the, the work that needs to be done in the weeds is I, I walk through Deep River and I look, like I, even in front of my own home, like I try to pull them out. I've heard different things that homeowners are responsible for the weeds between the roads and the curbs, um, but I, I don't know, do we get the gardening club involved? I don't know if we can actually pull these weeds out honestly by hand, like I know I can't pull the ones out in front of my home.
Yeah, I haven't noticed them, so if you want to swing by or send me a note that tells me where they are, we can get the town crew looking at them.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important that, you know, if people see something, say something, you know, it, it's one of those.
Yeah, we're certainly happy to, happy to work on stuff if we know about it.
And, uh.
Well, we just were trying to bring in businesses, right, and we want Deep River to look good, and these, these sidewalks we have are, are one of our greatest assets, you know, and it attracts people. So we definitely want them to, you know, continue to look beautiful.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yep, well, that's an interesting question, you know, that, some of the, some of the sidewalks, some of the storefronts have trees in front of them in a little planter. Uh, you know, some folks maintain those planters beautifully and other folks ignore them, um, and really the responsibility is that, I don't know the answer to that.
I know, I know, like the gardening club was, you know, but again, I think we, I don't know, maybe that's something economic development can do is reach out to those, because, I mean, from our standpoint, we do want the town to look good, to attract people and businesses, so, right, so we can, you know, maybe, you know, maybe that becomes the responsibility of, uh, E D C.
Well, it's, it could be, certainly something to look into, um, like I say, I don't, I, you know, I, I, I think that it is, it is a pretty beautiful downtown and pretty beautiful town altogether, so. As we maintain our properties, um, individually, we also try to maintain them as a community, as a town, so, um, if we know about it, we can try and, try and address it. So, I'm happy if you stop by, we can take a walk down Main Street, you can point out what you've seen.
Yeah, well, I, alright, I mean, that's fine, but time, you know, I mean, I, I, isn't that something that the town crew can do is take a drive around and, and look? I mean, I know I've spoken up around, um, Atwood and that whole sidewalk up there already and.
Oh, that sidewalk, no, that, that sidewalk, we, we just bought some equipment, a, a, a high-powered brush so we can open that sidewalk up, but it's just, one thing got in front of the other as far as the town crew, I've been after them to, to do that for, for a good long time now. Um, that'll be, that'll be opened up over down by, down by exit, the entrance, uh, exit five, uh, that'll be, that sidewalk will be opened up. No, I, I run down there, that sidewalk has gotten down to about a foot and a half wide.
Yep.
Yeah, and it goes to that Canfield Woods, I mean, so it's so beautiful, right, to walk through our town, to be able to go down there, so that's great that that's gonna be, um, opened up.
That's, that's good news, yeah, yeah, that piece of equipment's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Could that be used for snow removal in the winter too?
I imagine it could, it's a big powerful brush.
Yep, yep.
But that's something else we've got to prepare for us, snow removal's coming up, it's coming up faster than we like.
Yep.
Um, alright, anything else?
So Brett Thompson at one thirty-seven, I just, I want to unders, better understand, I guess, the selection process that the town goes through to bring people onto commissions. I've been involved in this, I think, was involved in a, in the last couple of rounds and this round, and it feels opaque to those of us who are outside of the, of the system. Um, about how people get to, to be considered for things, um, are there deadlines for when people are able to, do they apply? Do, you know, who, who gets to be selected, who, who's vetted, who's decided? It really from the outside looks kind of, um, unfathomable, I guess, so if, if someone could, um, kind of explain how this is supposed to work for people, that would be great.
Well, we, we try to publish the back, any vac, at time there's a vacancy, we publish that and it stays published on our website and on our publications, um, until it's full.
Right, but.
There are seats, like, there are no deadlines that I'm aware of, um, at all. Uh, the folks have made applications, the, the way to make an application is, there are probably three different ways to do that. And in making application, it's really, it's not, doesn't even need to be as formal as that, it's, let it be known to the Board of Selectmen that you would like to be considered for any of those vacancies. The Board of Selectmen will then, usually will reach out and, uh, and speak with, with whatever individual wants to come, or that individual can come to a selectmen's meeting, that's how it used to happen quite a bit, is folks would just come to a selectmen's meeting and say that they would like to be, participate. I, I get emails once or twice a month, or once or twice every couple of months, depending on the season, for folks that are new to town and they want to volunteer and they want to participate in a committee, so just making it known to the First Selectmen's Office is one way, or to the Board of Selectmen. Another way would be to just to, to reach out to your, to the town committee if you are registered with a party and you could be endorsed by them. And, and I suppose, those are the three ways I was thinking, I'd come to the Selectmen's Office, come to a Selectmen's meeting, go to a party, uh, of, of one of the town party committees and, um, and make it known that way.
But it seems like if there are, so obviously there were decisions that came to, ahead tonight, right?
I'm sorry, I, you broke up.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, yeah, I could hear you, I just, you broke up, I couldn't understand.
Okay, um, so obviously decisions were being made tonight about appointments to various missions, so wouldn't that imply there's some kind of a deadline involved? So people who, to be involved.
Vacancies, we had new situations, new people to fill the vacancies, that's what I thought I was just trying to say, is when there's a vacancy, um, we advertise it, person has, yep, anybody has an opportunity to, to let it be known that they have interest in that position. This morning, after we had already, um, determined that Pat Mikowski would be, uh, appointed, Scott dropped off, uh, Kate Bergeron's application, or not application, but a recommendation for Kate to be on the Board of Education. Um, if, if Pat had not gone through or if there had been discussion and Pat had not, not been approved by the board, then Kate would have been the next one that gets considered. There's nothing opaque about it, it's, it's really, frankly, it's, it's, this administration has been more open than has been in, in quite a long time, we're not trying to hold anything back from anybody.
Didn't mean to imply that you were, um, but I'm curious to know whether the other selectmen's knew and saw the, um, Kate Bergeron's qualifications? So was there a discussion about whether it was one of the candidates or the other?
There was not, we already had Pat on the agenda, um, Pat, we all, we all know Pat, Pat's qualifications are perfectly defined just as Kate's are. Um, it was not a matter of who was better than the other, this was just a matter of, we had that, that appointment.
Angus, I'm sorry, can I just, can I be recognized for just about, about a minute or so?
Well, if you want, if you, I'm not sure that Brett has finished his questioning yet, so, um.
Well, I was actually gonna reply to Brett personally.
Okay. Fire away.
But yeah, anyway.
Can you identify who you are? Can they identify who they are?
That's Scott Holden. He's, I think.
Um, Scott Holden, uh Essex Street, Deep River, uh Republican Town Committee Chairman. Um, anyway, so I would like to actually respond to Angus and actually Brett also. Um, so as of, as as far as uh the appointment of um uh Ms. Pat, as I like to call her, um, first of all, I love Ms. Pat. Um, you know, she grew up with my father. Um, there's nobody more qualified than, you know, n- n- uh, I mean, someone who's been the secretary i- in the elementary school for, you know, however many years. Um, I can only hope that she is the best person for the Board of Ed. Um, with that said, uh, obviously, you know, uh, uh, we were a little late of um endorsing Kate Bergeron. Um, and I just, and, you know, I did just bring the town hall this morning, which Angus McDonald did take it and he and he read it immediately. And he said, you know, I'm gonna try to get it on the agenda tonight. I'm not sure if I will be able to. Um, but he was very nice about it. And um luckily, you know, there was a small discussion about Kate tonight. Um, so obviously, the next position open on the uh elementary school board will be, you know, hopefully Kate Bergeron up for discussion. Um, so as far as uh, you know, Brett's comment, um, you know, I'm not sure how far um an endorsement from whether the RTC or the DTC goes, but it doesn't hurt. It's not gonna hurt. It's just one more person vouching for somebody. And um, you know, I personally to town hall this morning. Um, I know Jim Olson, I did talk to him, you know, a month or so ago about Kate's appointment, and he was all in favor. Um, and, you know, if I got it to town hall three weeks ago, would that have beaten Ms. Pat's appointment?
Absolutely would, yeah.
Maybe, maybe not. Um, but with that said, I mean, I, you know, again, I really like Ms. Pat. And I really like, you know, Ms. Kate also. Um, so with that said, um, you know, getting back to Brett, you know, I would recommend reaching out to, you know, whether it's your RTC or your DTC, um, you know, however much weight their endorsement holds with the town, you know, it's it's highly recommended.
So, yeah, you know, I'll I'll back that up a little bit, Scott, you know, um, and you said it very precisely. It's it's not a guarantee unless it's something that goes on a ballot. But it is, it is a positive way. And and in most communities, um, that is the first, the first step. I mean, frankly, many, many years ago, when I lived in Westbrook, um, I was an unaffiliated voter and I wanted to get involved on a, on on one of the planning and zoning commissions. So I I went to the commission and asked them how would I, how I did that. And they said, well, go to your go to your town committee and and tell them you'd like to join. So I I I didn't have a town committee because I was unaffiliated. So I joined a Democratic Town Committee and they they recommended me and that way we went. Um, so it is, it is a traditional way, at least in Connecticut, for that, for that to happen.
Right, so I mean, you know, like at meetings like this, at meetings like this, it's just gonna be one more person who has, you know, who has your back and is gonna come to the meeting and say, hey, you know, we we endorse this person.
Right, right.
You know, the the big, the big thing about Deep River, too.
Can I reclaim? I s- I think I started this. Do you mind if I reclaim my space here?
Sure. Go ahead, Brett.
I appreciate that. So I'm not talking, so so Scott, are you saying you knew there was, you knew that this decision was going to be made today? And therefore you were late to the table, or you came in not knowing that this decision was going to be made today and found out you were late to the table?
No, I did not know that Ms. Pat would be appointed tonight. Um, you know, I I had no, I I I would have had no way of knowing that she was gonna be appointed.
If you, no, I'm gonna just answer that, please.
Yeah.
Yet, if you had, if you had looked at the agenda, which was published yesterday, then you would have known.
But the agenda came out.
Correct.
You know, with.
It came out yesterday, that's right. But you brought, you brought that nomination in this afternoon, so.
Right, right.
But you.
Did have a way of knowing when you brought it in.
Right, so, so, yeah, I'm, so I'm not trying to be picky here. I'm just trying to understand, like, the the process that people need to go through. I mean, it would seem to me that that the town would put out a call for candidates and say, at the August twenty-fourth Board of Selectmen's meeting, we're gonna be making a decision about candidates for the following committees. We need you to have your, you know, if you're interested, you need to come in by X date for us to consider you. I mean, that's the kind of thing that I'm interested in because people don't know. They don't understand from the outside how the process works. So Scott wanted to bring someone to the table. Didn't know that you guys were gonna be making this decision tonight until the the agenda came out yesterday. So.
Well, that vacancy is, that vacancy has been open since November of last year.
Right, but yes, but but it's the point.
And everybody knew it. Scott knew it.
Well, yeah, and and you know, um Angus, and this is Angus and Brett and to everybody else. Um, we did know that the position was open. And, you know, originally at like December, um, you know, uh, I take responsibility, you know, maybe it's on the Board of Ed that they didn't, you know, appoint her within the sixty days, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway, I mean, if you do log on to this, uh, to the town website, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that all these, that all these vacancies are very up to date. I'm not sure who does the updating, but they are pretty up to date.
Not, not questioning that at all. They are definitely there. What I'm asking is whether the town could consider being a little more proactive and letting people know when decisions will be made about the vacancies so that people who want to step forward can do that in a time.
There was, the 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 answer to that is is more conversational than anything else. Um, we did not set a deadline that we were gonna, we were gonna make this appointment tonight. Pat's name came up last week. Pat was request, was asked if she would like to, if Pat, her name came up. She volunteered to to take the position. We put her on the agenda. It wasn't a matter of, well, gosh, we have to have this seat filled by now. It just is a pure coincidence that it was almost the same time that Kate's name came up through Scott. If Kate had come up last week, we probably wouldn't be, we wouldn't even be having this conversation about this position. But I don't think this is an individual position. It's just the situation for tonight. You're talking about all vacancies. And and, you know, I don't know, every publication we do, we put out there and say we have vacancies. Parks and Recreation is desperate for people. If we could get people on that committee, we would be a billion times better, even though, even in the middle of this pandemic, we still have an active Parks and Recreation with only a few people managing it. Um, it's, it's, it's really that, that, that's a committee that needs people. Um, you know, we we've, we've continued to to discuss and and I think that because of the planning and zoning, um feelings of citizens and folks um that aren't aren't involved in 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 the government, but but feel as if they're being railroaded or something like that. There's, you know, there's a feeling that we're trying to do this behind people's backs, but we're not. And I don't really care about party. The only reason I care about what party people are is is if there is a minority representation is issue. Um, I don't care. That's why Deep River, in my experience here, in the government here, it hasn't mattered if you're Democrat or Republican at all. It's, once you get on that committee, you work as a team. You work for the town. We we generally, I like this, I like to say in my experience in Deep River, that between September and November, between Labor Day and November, there's a, there's a partisan town. And then after November, we just work together to make the town as good as we can, make the towns positive. And we all work cooperatively. And and that has been the case in my experience here. You know, we have never, in my, in my experience here, had turnouts like we have for Planning and Zoning Commission um membership confirmations. You know, we most of the time, meetings other than budget, that that I've attended in my fifteen years or sixteen years here in town now, has been right in this small room. You know, folks come and and they have confidence that the people, the Board of Selectmen are working for them. Um, I appreciate the people coming out. It's great for people to come out. I just wish people were not as angry uh when they do come out on some of these things. But, you know, we're working, we're working as hard as we can to make sure that people know about these vacancies. And and.
Actually, I'm sorry, if I can just have like ten more seconds.
Yeah.
Um, just to respond to Brett. Um, so, I mean, as the way, the way that I see it, it's, it's, it's not, it's not Angus McDonald's responsibility. It's not Dwayne Gates. It's not Jim Olson's responsibility to advertise these positions. It's, you know, I, and you know, I hate to say, I hate to play party politics. Um, because, you know, small towns should not be divided at all. It's basically, it's it's in the best interest of the town as a whole. Um, but, you know, you really should, you know, these, whoever, whoever these people are that are running these, you know, committees, they should be reaching out and they should be letting everybody know, hey, you know, you got three open spots on, you know, economic uh economic development, um, Park and Rec, there's nineteen spots or whatever the number is.
Right.
You know, there's so many.
zoning Board of Appeals is.
Lots right now. And you know what? Ninety-five percent of these, these seats, they're, they should not be political at all.
That's right.
There's no reason to, for politics to play a part in them. Um, so, you know, as far as, you know, town hall, they shouldn't be, you know, it's not their job to advertise them. I mean, sure, they they should say it every now and then. Um, but it should be, you know, whatever your party affiliation is, they should be trying to get these people in these seats. And even if they're in these seats, they're only gonna have, you know, the majority slash minority representation anyway.
It is, I do think though, Scott, I do think it is our, it is our responsibility to to advertise them, and we do.
Yeah.
Can, can I make one comment here? A quick comment, two, actually. Um, I would encourage everybody to sign up for the notices that the town hall sends out. They're very helpful. You know about roads, you know about agendas. It's wonderful. And the other thing is is that when the RTC has recommended somebody for a board or commission, it's only after we have discussed and talked to the person. So it's, it's just a helpful kind of second, well, first, vetting before it's sent on to the Board of Selectmen. It's not just we endorse anyone. They come to us. We talk to them. We talk about qualifications and their interests. And then when we recommend to the Board of Selectmen a person's name, you can know that we have talked to that person. It's not a rubber stamp. But I, I really, I really say, sign up for the things that are on the website. It's very helpful.
Right.
The website of town website.
Let's give Brett a, let's give Brett a word.
Turn to, since I started the conversation, I I didn't introduce politics in this at all. I didn't talk about my party affiliation. I didn't talk about being divisive. So all I was asking is that perhaps the town, that's all I'm asking, perhaps the town could take a little more active role in letting people know when the positions are available and when the decisions are made. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm asking for. And if you decide, if you decide you've done enough or you don't need to do more, that's fine. I'm just bringing it to the table. I'm not bringing a partisan or a political issue to the table. So now what I'm gonna do is go eat my dinner because I interrupted my dinner to be with you tonight and to share this with you. So I appreciate your listening. Um, I hope you take what I've said seriously. Um, and consider it. So, thank you.
If I, if I can just jump on Brett and respond to one thing with you, Brett, um, with the planning and zoning, we we moved Daphne or Christie Stroud to, from an alternate to a position because she was already a sitting member.
Right.
I I had no problem with that. I would like to talk to some other people. This Marion, uh, this Marion lady could be the finest thing since sliced bread. But I've never talked to her. I don't know who she is. And that's why I voted the way I did, because I would like to talk to some other people before we move it forward. And so that's what was my, my best, and just to give other townspeople an opportunity to get involved and and let's, let's talk. You know, it's not something that has to be filled tonight. Doesn't have to be filled tomorrow. It would be nice if it was filled. But let's take a little bit of time to, to talk to these people. And that was my um reasoning there.
Yeah.
And one other thing for for Scott and Kate, um, don't lose faith. Um, as a person that sat on a Board of Education for fourteen years and Jimmy sat on it for eighteen years.
Yep.
We saw a lot of members come and go. Um, a lot of people did not finish their terms. Um, especially on the elementary school. There was bigger turnover on the elementary school than in Region Four. So, you know, stay, stay the course and and your time will come. Trust me, um, like I said, I've served many years on it with Jimmy. We saw a lot of turnover, so um, you know. That's all I, you know, my input.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brett.
Thanks.
Good night. Thanks for your service.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night. Well, I've got dinner coming too, so. I'd like to go home.
I don't, I don't, I don't have anything major and I I I just wanted to say a thank you, Angus, for for taking a ride with me today to inspect Kelsey Hill. Um, it's, it's, it's a different process and people in town, I think, think that it's, it's the old, what, the way it used to be done. And, you know, which is the chip seal and all that kind of stuff. When you, when you find out what it is and what it's supposed to do, and and hopefully it does it, and it's not just Deep River. Like you said, Chester's experimenting with it also. So I think once, once I got to know what it was and how it's supposed to work, um, and that they're gonna come and do cracks um within the next week or two or whenever weather, weather, um, whenever weather allows, that we'll see how it works. And hopefully it works as advertised and we get uh, you know, more, more years out of Kelsey Hill. And of course, like I've mentioned it many times, Kelsey Hill is the, is a, is a, is a road in town that's frequented by all three towns. And of course, Deep River only pays for Kelsey Hill, and that's another, that's another story. But, uh, you know, but um now that I'm educated and and um and and hopefully other people will get what's going on there and be patient and see if if in fact what was done will work, which I hope it does, and we'll see. But it's, at least now I know. And I thank you for taking a little ride with me today.
No, it's my pleasure. It's, it's, it was, and it's, it's a it's not just Deep River and Chester that are trying this out. We're trying it new. I don't think Chester's done it before either, but Old Sabre has used it for years. Um, and it's around. It's been around for a while. Process. It's not chip sealing.
Right.
It's, it's, there's no oil at all in it. It's really just to rejuvenate the pavement because there, there is so, pavement is different now than it was ten years ago, five years ago even. It's not, it's not as good a material. So this, this really, it's advertised as giving you ten, ten additional years to the life of the road. Um, and if that, if that works, then that's fantastic. You know, frankly.
We've been doing a job.
Kelsey, if we, if we come back in seven years and and chip seal it.
Yep.
You know.
We've been, we've been doing a very good job in town with the roads. And if this is another bullet in the gun for road maintenance, then um, then go for it.
Yep.
You know, so.
Well, it's the idea.
Yep. That's all for me.
Anything else for anybody?
Dinner bell.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, um, thanks, everybody.
I make a motion that we adjourn at uh seven forty.
Great.
Second.
Hi.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.